Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school committee meeting for Milton, February 7th, 2024. We'll call to order 7:01 PM. And first, we'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started with our school committee meeting this evening, I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Francis Desmond Jr., who passed away on January 17th. Frank will always be remembered for his dedication to the town of Milton. He was a graduate of St. Agatha's School and Milton High School, and he went on to serve in many town government roles. He was a longstanding town meeting member and a prior trustee of the Milton Cemetery. But Frank Desmond loved the Milton Public Schools, and he was a strong advocate in his role as both a school committee member and chair, as well as an instrumental member of the school building committee during the success of our school building project. And he saw that project through completion the last time that we were working through a big need to update our schools in Milton. In addition to all of that important work, he was also a proud member of the Milton Foundation for Education and the Milton High School Boosters. He was a well-known face at many Milton school events and was always known as a go-to person for support of our schools. So it seemed appropriate, on behalf of our Milton School Committee, to just pause and remember him and to say that our thoughts and prayers are with Frank's family and friends at this time. So if it's all right, let's just take a moment to honor Frank Desmond. Okay, thank you. So now, we will just look over our agenda for this evening and confirm whether we have any changes to tonight's agenda. We have a number of different topics here. Does anyone have any changes you'd like to propose? That looks great, all right.
That's good.
Then we can go ahead and approve that. And the next item would be citizen speak. This is when we set aside time for members of the community to come and share their perspectives with us. We set aside up to 15 minutes for speakers to share up to three minutes at a time if they have comments that they would like to bring. Are there any members in person of the community who are here to participate in citizen speak this evening? Is there anybody online? If you're online and you'd like to participate, can you please raise your hand at this time? All right, I do not see anybody raising their hand. So in that case, we'll just move right along into the superintendent's report, and you have a lot of exciting things to write to us this evening. So, go ahead, Peter.
So before we get into some of the otherwise topics under my report, I just wanted to share a few other things. One, you probably saw the principal update for tonight's meeting, a lot.
Thank you. So you saw the principal updates, a lot going on. January was a really full month. February is a very fast month with break coming up in a week and a half. And lots underway, so I just wanted to kind of emphasize that there's a lot to catch up on and stay connected to in all of our schools. I think you saw a lot of write-ups in January around the MLK and the work that was happening there. This is Black History Month, so continuing to kind of carry forward some of that work into this shortened month as well. The priority report is very close to being done. We're kind of finalizing it with a lot of, a lot of different hands are a part of this. We are hoping to send this out to Jack Rabbit next week and to hopefully have it for our next meeting, so that is exciting. Part of our work with that plan, which I've mentioned previously, and we're, we're getting down to, I think brass tacks now in terms of planning for March 5th, our PD day, where we're bringing the entire district together to reflect on the report, and really, the report as a kind of a backboard for the things both that we think are working really well in Milton and the things that we want to spend time on in the years ahead and, and really giving voice to all of our staff about what, what they feel, what they experience. And we're going to be collecting a lot of data from that day, which we'll then be using as we, for the next few months after that, really start to put stakes in the ground around an action plan, implementation plan, and, and setting a coherent vision for, for the next academic year. So this is part of that systems work that I've been talking about that is really, really important. When you read, read through the report, you're going to find there's a lot of, of kind of analysis of systems and kind of what's in place and what's not in place. And it's been interesting in talking to all the different folks that are helping to write this, there's very little that people disagree on, which is a great place to start. A few other things, healthy kindergarten signups. So right now, we are 20 students over where we were at this time last year. So I'm not sure, is that going to have any impact on our...
Yes.
I had assumed so, we just haven't talked about it yet. So we, we don't have a final number, but we're getting close. And it's, it's always good to be up in numbers as opposed to down. So that is, I think, a positive.
You just need another classroom to go into, but other than that, it might be more than one.
That's, that's going to be on the, the topic here in a minute. I'm going to be talking about that. So I would like to transition to, one of my other topics is introducing our new Tucker principal. Could I?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so Celeste Hoag, welcome. So we are, we are absolutely thrilled to welcome Celeste to Tucker and to MPS. We've gotten to know you better over the last number of weeks, and the buzz after we announced you, you coming has been real. And I've had lots of conversations with people saying, "We're really excited to have her come." So we'd, we'd love for you to share just with the school committee a little bit about what you're excited about, kind of anything that, that crosses your mind as you sit at the table here.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you very much for this warm welcome. I too am very excited and very honored to be appointed as the next principal at Tucker to start in July. I do plan to utilize and leverage some time that I have in my existing position to be able to spend some time in the community, working with some key folks as well at, possibly at Tucker, but within the district and in the community as well. As some of you know, I bring with me just, just over 20 years of experience in education. I strive to be a very good listener, good collaborator. I did that as a teacher, and I had some success with it. Loved being a teacher. I never saw myself in this position 20 some-odd years ago. But as a school leader, I, you know, pride myself on trying to do that as well, because I think those are fundamental skills that, you know, work well when you're working with, you know, your three core populations that you're working with in a school, your staff and your community, your families and your students. So, so I, I thank you all for this warm welcome, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
I just want to thank you for taking the time to meet the Tucker community as a parent who also participated in the screening process. I think people are thrilled to have you onboard, and we wish you the most success, because a lot of our kids, a few of our kids are going to be living with you next year.
I have to say, I felt very welcomed that day. What could have been, I think I said earlier, to, to two other school committee members was that day that could have been very stressful and nerve-wracking. It was very pleasant, I felt very welcomed. I enjoyed it, it was a long day, but I, I really enjoyed myself. And when I left, I, I found myself wanting even more to be appointed as the next principal. I thought that was really telling, you know, when you're driving away and you're not regretting anything.
That's a good sign.
I was excited, and I felt very welcomed, so.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you for helping to make that experience pleasant.
Well, Tucker is such a special community. I, I have, I mentioned I have two kids. I have a fourth grader and a first grader. And we've been part of Tucker for a long time, because we also got to participate in the pre-K program there as well. And, yeah, I, I just, that warms my heart to know that you picked up on that just in your time, your short time so far being there. And, you know, as we've all known, Tucker is so deserving of, like, an excellent leader, and we're just happy that that's going to be you, so.
Well, I will try my best every day.
Looking forward to, looking forward to getting to know you, and I know that, as you mentioned, Peter, like, so many folks are really excited to have you joining us.
Well, that's so humbling, I got to tell you. So thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, next on my report is student representatives, and this is the best part of the night, for sure. Y'all want to come up and sit at the, at the table? So I mentioned last, in our last meeting, that Bow and I have been meeting with this incredible team over the last months, as we've kind of talked about how to make this role meaningful and impactful and, you know, kind of work, working together to, to look ahead, to see like what, what would a model look like for all of us to really have student voice front and center. And these four students have a lot to share, great insight. They're fun to hang out with. Do y'all want to introduce yourselves first?
I'm Sydney Burns, I'm the junior representative here.
Hi, Adam Cheers, I'm the freshman representative.
I'm Elia Scados, and I am the sophomore representative.
Hi, I'm Julia Mangam, I'm the senior representative.
So I think the floor is yours.
Yeah, sure. Gladly, so thank you for having us. One of the things we were tasked with early on in the fall was trying to think of ways to include students in the decisions that are made by the school committee. And so, to what extent can students have a voice in this, this local part of our government? And the, the primary thing that came up was a calendar conversation that's ongoing, and what, what input could a student provide on, you know, how representative the current calendar feels to them and what efforts can be made by this, you know, committee to, to address, you know, the gaps in whether or not the calendar honors Eid or Lunar New Year or Diwali? And so, we undertook a survey in order to assess how well are students feeling that they're represented? And then, what are some of the ways that they see themselves in the future? Able to more, to, to feel more recognized? And does that include a, a full day off for those three holidays? Does that include an integrated school day celebration with opportunities for assemblies, art, and other cultural celebration? Or what does that necessarily look like? And providing just that outlet for students, students to speak on those things, I think will be important, especially as, you know, that's a decision that will affect the calendar, you know, in years to come, so.
Yeah, so one of the things that we were talking about is like whether if this committee decided not to integrate it as a full day off, like some sort of like, you know, like reflections that we could have in school in order that we properly recognize these days while not like taking a full day off? So with our survey that we've kind of constructed and with the help of our advisors, we were planning to release it, but also, also gather input on whether students would rather just have a day of learning per se? Because, you know, it, it was kind of understood that when kids have a day off, especially those who don't pertain to the ethnicity or religion that these holidays pertain to, they kind of just view it as a day off and maybe a day of learning or some educational activities throughout the system would actually be more beneficial. So we were also talking about that and ways to incorporate that.
Yeah, totally agreeing with Sydney. I know that when we first talked about this, I was thinking like, whoa, like, I've never heard of some of these holidays before. And I think some sort of like celebration like that would be meaningful for some people, just to have it recognized. I think we also did our own personal piece, just to like work together and figure stuff out. I did a little research on some of the surrounding towns and what days they have off. And something I did notice was a few towns have mentions in their calendar. They recognize holidays at the bottom, and they say like, "We won't have homework on these days," or "We won't have any games or big events on these days," to make sure that the holiday itself is being recognized, but that they don't have to take the day off. So I thought that was something to consider.
And then, I spoke to a few students and staff that I know on this topic in order to maybe adjust the, the survey we made a little bit to fit their, their needs. So, and the consensus is that students in particular really value Milton's diversity. And they really want to celebrate, they have a desire to celebrate the traditions and holidays and rituals of the various ethnicities and religions that are represented in our student body. And then also, speaking to a few staff members and students, extending the school year into the summer has been, there's been, it's been that matter of concern. They think it would be unproductive to do that. So they're definitely in favor of taking the, the half-days, which would count towards the 180-day-long school year mandated by the state. But overall, I'm going to speak to a few more students and staff members and hopefully share my input.
So yeah, that's pretty much all that we were talking about, and we're planning on sending the survey out soon so that we can report some of the data back to you all.
And the survey is only sent to the, the high school and the middle school students?
Yes, I think that's what we were planning on.
Great.
Thank you all for sharing, this is really exciting. I'm not, so, this is such an important topic, and we've been talking about it a lot for a long time. You know, and I think you're even just voicing some of the reasons why it's a little bit complicated, right? Both practical reasons, like the trade-offs you're making when you're adding days off as far as like ending the school year potentially, but also the, I really appreciate your reflections on the, like, the meaningfulness of like how to really help us celebrate and learn together. So I think, you know, this topic is one that we do need to come back to. We need to, sorry, my brother is calling me. We talked about the idea of creating a committee that would be representative, that would include members of the community, that would include obviously students. And, and maybe there could be a way to incorporate the data you'll be collecting within that, sort of the deliberations of that. I think we talked about a working group. We haven't like settled on what it would be called, but the goal would be to come up with recommendations that could then inform the school committee undertaking some like bigger, like comprehensive review of the calendar next year. So it sounds like everything you're working on could be timed well to kind of dovetail into that. And there could be great ways for you, the four of you, to participate going forward in those different ways. And then, in the meantime, I mean, some of you are making me think, I don't know what the rest of you all think, but like for next year, since we've kind of realized, we realized through investigating different things to do with our union contracts that are in place for next year, that we don't have a lot of flexibility at the moment in changing out the days off that we currently have within our calendar. And so we, we do know, having approved the draft for next year, that like those three holidays that you're thinking about will not be days off next year. And that doesn't mean they couldn't be days off in the future. That was like a decision the community came to together, bless you. But what could we do next year, you know? Like, I think that's another thing that you all could really help us think about, help you, Dr. Burrows, think about and your team, right?
Definitely.
Like, we will be in school next year. And so what can happen on those, and maybe other days in school to, you know, we could, we could really look at that, we could think about that, like Black History Month, what's happening in Black History Month, actually? You know, or any number of things that you can keep thinking about together, but... I guess I'm, I'll stop there, I don't want to keep talking. If the rest of you may have comments about the calendars, but I'm also, I'm going to put out a question, and maybe it's a lingering question, and it's going to be something we follow up on your next visit. But I'm kind of personally curious also to understand a little bit, like, what brings each of you to this role that you have? Like, what inspires your own sense of service, you know, within student government? And kind of what makes you interested in the particular role of representative to the school committee as far as kind of what, yeah, just what drives you around that? You don't have, I don't want to put you on the spot. You can think about it, maybe you can share. Just kind of curious.
I can go first. I'm a senior this year, and I know that in the future, I want to go to school to be an educator, and becoming familiar with like the school community itself is really valuable to me. I just served on the, the principal screening committee with a few other people here. And it was just really cool to learn about how this system works. And, yeah, that's why I'm here.
I'm here because my mom is also a teacher here as well. She's a teacher in this high school, so I see her every day. But generally, like, I've always been raised that like, don't complain if you can't do, if you don't do anything about it. And so I think that taking like an active role is just important for me as a student to voice any concerns I have, as well as to just oversee what goes on here.
Yeah, I agree with both Julia and Sydney. I think just a love of service and commitment to justice has led me to represent the school. Just generally, I think, you know, the way that we approach education and the way that we become, you know, we can become change-makers if only we take that action, I think is very powerful, especially at this age.
And I believe that students in particular have the responsibility to continue the values and principles that we, that we value. And I, I think that we all have to play our part, and I think this role is a good opportunity to begin.
That's awesome. Thank you also much for sharing.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you all.
Yeah, so I would say thank you for the time that you're giving sort of the calendar topic, you know, it's an important one, and it's one that I think requires sort of that view, sort of like a, a wide consideration, right? Not only seeing it as we can only do one thing, but what else can we do? So I like the fact that you've integrated that into your survey, that in addition to a day off, what else could, could be done to honor and recognize the richness that we have in our, in our town? So thank you for that. And I think that you're also starting to model, I hope, what we continue to do into the future, which is bringing student voice into decision-making. There are a lot of adults that make decisions for you all, but at the end of the day, you're, you have to live with those decisions on a daily basis. And so I think having your voice at the table is critical, because you bring an important perspective, and I appreciate the fact that you're taking the time, and thank you for being the change-makers that you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you go, can sit down, thank you. Okay, so our next superintendent's report item is short-term facilities update. Let's keep rolling here. So I shared with all of you, and word has gone out to the community that we did our thorough investigation of the Tucker preschool facility. We, as you know, we started out by just engaging to see if it was a possibility when we started talking with Curry.
Curry, Curry.
Did I say Tucker?
Yeah. It's okay, we all, I was like, wait a minute.
Curry, Tucker, you know.
It's all good. We've got Tucker on the mind, it's good.
They're kind of close by. So the Curry, thank you, the Curry, the Curry preschool space. Once we started engaging with Curry and started digging in, we brought staff in, we looked at what program we could move over, we engaged everybody as we needed to, right? We talked to the CPAC, we talked with staff, we, we looked at everything. And as we kind of looked at the, the costs of that move for five, for five years, what we would gain, the fact that we couldn't move all, all of our programming over there, so we would have to split some programming, there were staffing implications to that as well. So when we looked at the whole package, we recognized that it, for the, for a short-term space needs, it, it didn't fit the bill in the way that we needed to. We, it did however, give us more clarity and I think more intention around the Cunningham attic and really galvanizing the, that community to, to hone in and make that happen. You all know that we do have, and I'm going to ask Chris Hayden, our director of facilities here, to come up and be a part of this conversation. Thank you for being here, Chris.
Thanks.
As you know, we have $2 million, a $2 million ask in the capital request for the Cunningham attic. We have worked with, I've worked with our principals in both buildings, in Cunningham and Callicut, to engage their staff. So both John... So both John and Holly have worked with their staff to gather information around what, what do you believe are the biggest space needs we have? Of course, every staff member isn't an, an expert architect and can't say, well, we think this should happen or that should happen up there. But they can share, based on my lived experience in this building and looking at the needs of students, these are the things that I think would be most helpful. So we, we are, we have that data now. This happened last week. And I'm going to let Chris talk, talk a little bit about kind of what are the next steps from here to the finish line? And, and what, what kind of timeline could we expect depending on the kinds of decisions that we might make about what goes up there?
Thank you. So I met with Holly and John as well to discuss what they would, what they would like to see up in the attic. You've got 4,000 square feet space. There is potential for restrooms up there. So it really came down to what, what, what type of space would, would be beneficial to Cunningham, Callicott up in that 4,000 square feet? And it really, it was, nobody knew. It was really a question of what's happening over at Curry. You know, do you build classrooms? If you build classrooms, you'll spend the full $2 million because if you build classrooms, you will need bigger, you have to fully build out classrooms and you'll need full functioning restrooms, larger restrooms to support the students that are up on that floor. But then if, if Curry came through, you know, was it going to be breakout space? Was it going to be, could it be art or music rooms? Or, you know, is it going to be a potential library where it's a lower cost in build out? It could be a smaller restroom needs up there, which then maybe you spend a million. So it was, it was just one of those, we just didn't know at that time. So you just, you sort of shoot for the moon, right? So $2 million, we feel you can build out your classrooms. It seems that there was concern if it's breakout space, having the students travel up to the fourth floor. It's really, you know, to, you know, and as I, as I'm learning and understand sort of breakout space, it sort of just happens immediately. It's quickly, it's sort of outside the room, it's at the end of the hallway. But if you're on the first floor, are you going to travel up to the fourth floor to sort of have this breakout space? You know, what sort of makes sense in the, the operational day to day, school day? So.
It would support wellness.
Yes, yes.
Exercise.
Correct, yes. So, so it comes down to, you look at maybe what have the, you know, the teachers, the staff, what have they given up? There's no teacher lounge, right? The teacher lounge in Callicott is now a teaching space. So there's no full functional lounge at that, on the first floor. So there are no restrooms on the first floor for staff to use. So if you're a teacher, you have to go from your first floor up to the second floor to use restrooms, right? So, you know, so I think that's a concern for Holly to sort of, you know, bring that back if she can have a lounge back. You talked to John, his lounge currently is in the library of Cunningham, right? And we all know that the libraries are not the best fit for a sort of a faculty lounge. So I, as a facilities guy, don't like to see refrigerators in a library to support faculty lounges, but you know, work with what you got. So it's, it's, so there's a lot of options on the table. It's just, it's really honing in on, is it a faculty space? Is it an art room? Is it music room? I know there's some thoughts of, you know, the safety of the children on the fourth floor. But I think the, the building is sprinkled. There are, there are stairwells, plenty of access and egress from the space. So I, you know, those can be minimized. I think it's really, how do you gain more classrooms on the lower levels? And it would probably be by taking half the space and making them into sort of a music room, art room. And then you gain those classes on the lower levels. It could be a, a faculty, a staff lounge or a workspace, I should say, where, you know, teachers can do, sit at a computer and have their own space. Is that used by both schools? Yes, that could be. So, so those, both schools have breakouts or workspace for their teachers to grade papers or do whatever work they do during the day. But it's just really having to understand what the pressures are on us of, if you want four or six classrooms built up there, it's, you know, what, are those going to be the upper grades? And you, and sort of what happens, in fact, everything just sort of stays status quo on the lower levels. And you, you know, you take your $2 million, you get your classrooms, you get your restrooms. But maybe the upper, sort of the fifth graders are up, up on the fourth floor. So it's just, I don't know the logistics of that. That's sort of up to the principals to know the day to day. It's just looking at space. I just look at, you know, 4,000 square feet of what the potentials are. And, you know, I know that we have an important vote coming up on the 13th, so that sort of questions everything. But, you know, how much are we, how much are we looking to spend up on the fourth floor? If you, if you want a simple, quick build out, it could be a library. Everything can stay exposed. You know, you put new flooring in. It's, it's, it's been a library art space before for the town of Milton. And then you have finished floor, on the third floor where your library used to be, that's finished space. Sort of build out new classrooms there would be less costly. But once again, you know, do you want the, the library up on the fourth floor? It's, once again, it's a space that the kids aren't there all day long, but it's an opportunity to sort of save money on that aspect of $2 million.
If you move the library upstairs, would you then retrofit the existing library for classroom space?
Yes, yes. So there are, there are, so if you look at the floor plan, there are sort of four classrooms directly below the, the library. So you would sort of just mimic those. And then in the library, there's sort of the computer center and you have the offices. And those could be, the offices could be left in the computer area, the computer lab could be reworked into another classroom. But yeah, so you sort of have the floor plan that would just sort of mimic what's, what's down below.
But there's already two classroom craft out at the library currently.
Yes.
So if you make it mimic what you have on the first floor, that's four classrooms only.
Yes.
And we already have two classrooms there?
Yes, yes, yes. Well, there's two, one's a lounge, one's a lounge. So, but you know, I, but it's one of those, yeah, it's just trying to, you know, fit the Tetris pieces together to, to what benefits the school.
What's the current square footage of the library itself?
That is, it's, I know it's over 4,000 square feet, so it's larger. So if you go to a smaller footprint for the library, you know, that's a downside of that. But, but you, but the, but the library also includes the offices in that computer lab. That seems to be on the, sort of the list of what do we do with this space now the computers are sort of, or at least those computers are going away. So it's about, you're talking, it's about, I want to say about 4,500 to 4,000 square feet.
Is there an immediate need for a classroom this fall?
There may be. I mean, I was talking about the kindergarten class, so that was the first thing I thought of.
Because then it questions, if you were to use the fourth floor as classroom space, how quickly could it come online? Versus the library is partially finished. I'm not a big fan of, I don't, I don't have a preference, but it's, when you start thinking about the logistics of getting it ready for the beginning of the school year, it's limits are options, I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, um, one classroom could be feasible. The whole build out probably wouldn't, where, financially, the, the funds wouldn't be available until July 1. So, you know, you're starting now just hiring an architect and getting to design. So you're really not online until September of 2025. I mean, you'd be ready for that. I mean, and you're doing construction in an attic during school, right? So you've got live construction going up on the fourth floor. So that's going to be disruptive to the third floor classrooms. You have to remember that and you've got contractors and, I mean, it's, it's inside finished work, but it's still, it's going to be a logistics issue of trying to get contractors in and out of the school.
If, depending on what the space becomes, it could potentially be, you know, like a classroom space you'd bring online at the beginning of an academic year, right? Like you would shoot for, like you said, September. If it was intervention space or, or some other space that you could essentially inhabit and move back in, into that space once it was available, like it could probably be earlier than that, right?
Yeah, correct. And, and if you, if for some reason, you know, if it said, make it a library, right? All I'm doing then, you're going up there, you're carpeting and you're painting, you're revamping the lights. You're putting some air conditioning up in the space to condition it fairly quick. You know, it's sort of a, because all you're doing is just moving book stacks. So it's one of those, that could be a quick turnaround. And then, then you're just refinishing the interior space. I mean, it's still going to be construction on the third floor, but you already, you're already dealing with finishes, sort of. So it's really just getting partitions up. So it could go a little faster if you, if you sort of make that decision. But if, if it's going to be classrooms up on the fourth floor, it's a little, a little bit more.
So it sounds like there are a lot of options that we're weighing. What is the timeline for making sort of a determination of the best use of that space? And so that we can make it happen sooner rather than later?
I think one of the keys is not perambulating around and around and looking at the data and making a decision. So that's, that is, that's definitely what we're doing. I mean, we're timing this with, I, I feel like we'll be able to make a decision pretty soon, once we know we have the money available. And right now, we're preparing for and hoping that we get that $2 million. And without the $2 million, I, I think we're still going to use that space in whatever way we can in, either in the condition it's in right now and ask for the money again and, and have maybe a short term. We have a lot of storage up there that we think we can be creative and find places for, or digitize it, records, things like that. So I think there, there, either way, we're going to utilize that space more efficiently. But I think now that we've got that data as of this week, you know, I, I would see a, a decision coming by March.
So Chris, you're going to be at next Thursday's Capital Improvement Planning Committee meeting, right? And so will that be, so just first things first, like to make sure we can be approved for this $2 million, given that we don't yet know like exactly what we would be using it for? Will you just be, I'm assuming, I'm assuming you'll be prepared to like present the options or answer questions if members of that committee would like to understand what that ask?
Correct, yes.
And, and not just the options of what we would do with it, but like what would be the benefit? What would be the, like in what ways would it solve our overcrowding issues? Details to that effect could persuade folks that this is absolutely a necessary investment.
I mean, I think we could share from, you know, I've reviewed the data from staff and, you know, staff say we need more breakout space. We're five people in an office and we need more space to do our jobs, getting intervention out of the hallways. So I mean, there, there are things that we can just, we could share today, if that meeting was happening now, we could share. These are things we're going to address because they've been prioritized by staff previously and recently in this, in the survey that Cunningham and Callicott both did.
I mean, just speaking with the town, you know, the question was, well, if Curry goes, if Curry happens, do you still need the $2 million? It's one of those, so the, the town is looking at it as, you know, how much do you really need? So, and all budgets are on hold for right now. So no one's getting any answers on approvals until after Tuesday. That's, that's the tough part. It's sort of, I think we'll, we'll know more about the, if that $2 million is even a possibility for us.
But it is the better investment.
Oh, yes.
Instead of paying a lease.
Oh, correct. I mean, because it's. You know, having, and I, you know, I don't know the in depth, but you know, as a, as a parent and sort of just not knowing if the land swap is going to happen. I mean, this, this, Curry may be a bridge to nowhere, right? In five years, they may have, everybody has to come back, right? So if you don't have a new school ready to go, it's sort of, you've, you've done a five year lease, Curry wants you out. We're right back, we're right back talking about the same thing five years from now. So it's, you know, it's best to sort of keep in our own house, build it out and move forward.
Yeah, I completely agree that if we have to pick one, right, we have long term asset versus a short term or medium term asset. I think just the thing that worries me about all the eggs in the Cunningham fourth floor basket is that addresses space needs at a single site. It is our largest site, it's over 1,100 kids. However, it does nothing to help the space crunch at Tucker, which the Curry situation would have helped. Tucker is obviously our smallest facility and has real space needs. Obviously neither of those situations really helps Glover or Pierce or the high school, which all also have space needs that we need to continue to work on. So in any situation, we still have things we need to work on and that's the, you know, I think the long term school building thing. But the loss of Curry as an option from just a space perspective is, in my mind, just, you know, slightly, it's, you know, disappointing obviously just from the standpoint of our ability to help one of our other schools.
And Glover, Glover has potential. I mean, it's a one story building. You know, if you, if you walk into Glover to the left hand side, you've got the principal's office, you've got the music room. But you, you have potential to add on to the wing. There's a music room down there. So that, you know, it's a one story building. So it's a, you get an architect, you get a design, you get a number. It could be a quicker build to do something at Glover. There's parking, more parking availability to extend. So if you put more teachers there, you're going to need more parking. Not much, but you know, there's, there is potential for a build out at Glover that, you know, could, could get you six classrooms. And it, and it's sort of, it's there. It's just, you know, it's going to cost more than $2 million. But it's sort of, I think the town starts, we need to start looking at the potential. I mean, there's potential at Tucker behind the school to build on that. And so there are, there are little caveats at every little school that I've looked at that we, there's potential to do additions. I think Tucker has always been behind Tucker's that, that is sort of a, there's a gold mine back there. There's a lot of real estate back there. We can build right up to the curb. I've already spoken to the, the inspectional services on that. So we can fill the entire back of Tucker and build.
You mean the basketball and soccer?
No, not, no, no, behind it. There's an alleyway where our food and dumpster are.
Oh.
Yes. So that can be built upon. I mean, you can, you can double the size of Tucker's cafeteria in a heartbeat. It's one, you know, so there's potential back there. It's just the food service, the food service and your dumpster service, the trash, right? Those trucks are backing over your playground every morning.
Right.
I guess back in the day, I haven't been here long enough, but apparently those services used to be on the front. So if you know the parking lot, there used to be a door there. Now there's a window.
Right.
So if those services can come back to the front, you know, it's, you've got plenty of real estate behind Tucker to build three stories. I mean, you can double the size of their cafeteria and then build on top of that, you know, sort of. So there's potential. I just don't want anybody to give up on our schools and sort of think that the, the Guile Road is going to be the answer. If that comes to fruition, great. If not, I think it's, we still have potential at our schools without doing modular, without, you know, you know, the, the plans that we had previously. I don't, and I don't, you know, I can't question why, you know, maybe this was thought of years ago. But I think it's sort of, having looked at the floor plans and just sort of like fit room and making things are to scale. I'm looking at things properly and sort of understanding that, yes, this could work, you know. So it may, it may not be six classrooms, but you can at least get five at Glover, right? But once again, it's a first, it's only one story. So it should be, and you're not interrupting the, you'd be interrupting the, the playground up front, but you could build on and then just, you know, demo wall and then open up and connect the building. So you can do all this construction behind the scenes and then blow a wall open and now you've connected to the building. So there's a lot of potential. I just, you know, I just think we have to sort of look at every square inch and every little nook and cranny and we'll find it. The solution's there.
I appreciate your creativity.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think this is part of that creative process. If you look at something like 10 times and not see it and then you're like, oh, okay, it's right there. So I appreciate that you're going to that level of detail and looking at everything and, you know, looking at different options for each of the different facilities. Because it was kind of disappointing to hear about that Curry wasn't going to work out and then we're kind of back at square one. So I appreciate you kind of.
Yeah, I, I enjoy doing it.
Looking at those options. And it was great to see the, go through the tour with you when we did that back in the fall and see those spaces. So it's like as you're explaining, it's easy for me to kind of like visualize it. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, a lot can happen at Tucker. I mean, we saw the library, we saw the library, right? There used to be old gymnasium. So you can mezzanine that. You make the, you make the library two stories, you know, different levels. So you can expand the library. So there's, Tucker, even though it's small and it's sort of, it's, it's sort of, it's, it's sort of just is, not isolated, but it's just stuck there on that corner. There's a lot of growth, period, potential there. So.
And that was a clever suggestion too about that mezzanine at Tucker.
Yeah, I mean, it's, once again, if you, can't build out, build out.
Yep. Love that.
All right.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're still in my report. I'm hogging all the time tonight. So our final in my report is the Milton High School Program of Studies, and there's an attachment, Karen, do you wanna come up? So I invited Karen here just to answer any questions you might have. This will be warned as an action item at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth, is it?
How are you?
Thank you.
Karen, do you wanna just give a kind of a brief overview of changes and what have you?
So I believe what was shared with you was just an overview, a document that indicated the changes, the grammatical or any of the changes to the program of studies. Overall, there's no major changes as far as, there's one new course being offered through the English Department, Introduction to Law. What we, what we've done more is streamlined courses, for example, in our math department used to be, sorry. Computer science, AP Computer Science Robotics was always in our math department, and we've moved that to our career tech department to just streamline the courses, all the technology courses in that department. So that is one of the major changes. Course names, just to be more in alignment with Twenty-First Century Expectations for Courses. So that is a lot of the changes that you're going to see. We have, in our English Department, two years ago, I believe, we proposed or we implemented semester-long English courses, which really, the students have really hit the ground running with them. Some of them have become full-year courses, for example, one of the courses, African-American Literature, was a semester-long course, now it's a full-year course for seniors. So I like to see the growth that these courses have over the years. Another semester-long course that we're changing to a, a full-year course is Sports and Society. And when you walk into these classes, you, you just have to see the conversations that are happening, it's really great. So again, we shared with you the site, the current site, and as I said, the document that I'm looking at, it's just name changes for the most part. That's, if you'd like me to go through all of the name changes, I, I'm happy to do that, but if you'd like to just look at it in your own and ask me questions in the next month, that's fine too. We, I'm happy to say, just one of the things to stand out, the, in our Social Studies Department, I said this last year, we were going to be piloting AP African-American Studies. And we had one full section of that run this year with twenty-five students in it, and we will be running that again next year, not as a pilot, but as an official course here at the high school. One of few high schools across the nation that was piloting that course with great success. Dr. Burrows mentioned the newsletter, the weekly newsletter, and last week, I don't know if anyone saw it, but we had a Black History Month celebration in the African, the AP African-American course, where students were bringing in foods and celebrating and exploring their culture and sharing it with everyone else. That was a great experience that students had last week in one of our classes here, so I'm really excited that we've had full success with that and now it's off the pilot list with College Board and something official that we're offering to our students for next year. So any, any questions that you want, you see at this point, we're, we're proposing more dual enrollment courses through Quincy College in our English Department. We've already done the math, we're adding more English as well, the African-American course for college credit and the Introduction to Law, which is an elective course. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions you have now, we're at a later date.
No, I think the, the English, the creativity in having the two semester English courses gave students a significant amount of flexibility in terms of being able to get into literature in areas that they like.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it was very successful from the feedback I've heard. And I recently received a flyer, or saw a copy of a flyer, that the high school's deliberately trying to get more students enrolled in advanced placement by having students as ambassadors.
Yes.
Kudos for coming up with that.
Thank you.
I think it's a great way to involve their peers in making the case for why these programs are valuable and these courses are valuable, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, I, I just wanna, you had, someone had said earlier about student voice, and when I sat here four years ago applying for this job, that was one of the most important things to me. And to listen to the students here talk this evening.
I thought that's why you were here.
Yes.
Cheer them on.
But just to listen that they all sit here and advocate for what they think is right and, and knowing that they have a voice means so much to me, and I appreciate that you listen to what they say and what they bring to the table. I think their voice is extremely important, so thank you for that. And the AP work, we continue, the dual enrollment work, we're gonna continue to do, there's so much value in that, so thank you for recognizing that.
Now, the fact that more students are gonna be able to leave high school with college credit, whether through AP or dual enrollment, it will set Milton students apart and will probably save their parents a lot of tuition, so all is a good thing.
The last time I spoke to all of you was that, when we did our Site Council presentation, I just cross-referenced, again, the dual enrollment piece, the three hundred fifty dollars we charge for a three-credit course versus just UMass state level is, I believe it was fifteen seventy-five when I just checked earlier today, for three credits. So there, there is significant support when we can offer that exposure, and when you have that exposure at the high school level, it creates more success. That early exposure really just helps in the long run for our students, so you'll keep hearing me say that. Thank you. Anything else you'd like me to talk about? I'll be right over there if you have some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Sure, let's see, what else can I talk about?
Make it up.
I've got a lot to say, I think it's, it's over to you.
Great, okay, thanks. So, Chair, to report, there's just one item here tonight, but before I go into that, I'll just mention, I wanna give a shout-out to Collycott because this morning was World Read-A-Loud Day, and I had a great time participating. I know a lot of other people, I think both of you were there, lots of other folks from the community and the district. And I got to read to a fifth-grade class, and they were great, and it was really fun, and it's just a nice way to see our community come out to support. But also for one of our schools to like invite the community in, really nice. So, just wanna appreciate that experience. And then the only other thing on this part of the agenda is kind of a brief report out on our governance retreat that we had last week. So just to kind of share with the community, we, we've implemented these retreats, I think they're kind of shaking out to be like quarterly. And this grew out of our work over the summer with your kind of onboarding, Peter, around ways to build a strong working relationship between the school committee and the superintendent, but also to build relationships among ourselves as school committee members and really kind of like figure out how we can work most productively together and just intentionally. And so these retreats, we had one in the fall, this one last week was a follow-up to that. And it was just, in my opinion, like a very productive and enjoyable way to really do two things. The main thing we did was focus on our operating procedures that we continue to try to create for ourselves as a school committee. And we made progress toward identifying, you know, what our priorities are in those areas. We made progress in deciding upon a kind of format that we want to use to ultimately present these operating procedures. And Peter and I have a meeting tomorrow with Stephanie where we're gonna kind of push that ball down the field, and that will be good. We'll be able to bring that back to the next governance retreat that we have and hopefully be close to finalizing at least our first iteration of this document. And then the second thing we did was also spend time doing some mid-year like reflection, just as a, both as a group and as individuals, around what we feel has been working well so far this year in our work as school committee members and as a committee, and then also some areas that we're continuing to focus on. And so I personally found that really valuable and just felt through that time, just continued gratitude for the five of you and the way that you're showing up for our work together. And of course, to you, Peter, cause your leadership in kind of helping set a tone for this style of collaboration and just being colleagues has meant a lot, really helped. So hopefully that helps the community kind of understand what that is we're doing when we meet, we eat together, that's another, you know, we have dinner together. We're able to kind of interact in that, you know, like way that colleagues do when, when you have that opportunity to not be like so focused on the laptops or so many agenda items and whatnot. I don't know if anyone has anything to add to that, but I think we're still working to finalize the date for our spring retreat because we're trying to figure out when we can all be there for it, around some jet-setting international travel that some of our members will be getting to do. So that's, we're gonna have to stay on email finalizing that date, but.
I thought we already had the date.
No, that's when, Val can't make that date.
No, I, I thought we already set the date for, um, the tw- March twenty-seventh.
I can look and see what.
March twenty-seventh is, is a regular school committee meeting that has been like pushed back. And I think what I'm now, I didn't, I'm kind of waiting to see with your calendar, Peter, but the, what I was then wondering about was like April, the week before vacation, are you ba- when are you coming back? The week of April eighth? Yes, um, I'm gone, yes, I come back on the eighth. So, um, I think, um, I was wondering about that, um, week of, like later that week perhaps, if that would work, like.
I'm out of town the week of April eighth.
You are?
That's right.
Okay, all right, well. I'd seven days this school, is that school vacation? Is that school vacation? What about the first, you're leaving on Wednesday? Yes, so I could do before. Would anyone be able to do April first or second?
April fourth day?
Yeah. We don't have to decide right now, but if nobody automatically knows those are non-starters, that might be something I ask.
April first also Easter.
About, it's Easter Monday.
Yeah. I can do either, I think.
I'm available.
Okay.
I'm around. Tuesday would be slightly better for me, but.
Just slightly.
Yeah, I have something I could move if I need to.
Okay, I'll follow up on that, um, I'll follow up on April second as.
What, what should I write down here to, Charlene's probably watching right now, but.
Tentative, Charlene.
So I guess that's the question is, is if April second, if April second would work, it would be great to confirm that ASAP and get that like on our calendars. And that, but that would be our governance retreat.
April second, yeah.
Um, sort of for the spring, the final one before the election. And we would have had a, a regular school committee the week before, and then.
So no meeting on the third?
No meeting, no meeting on the third. April third is being pushed back to March twenty-seventh. Which actually means we end up with like a, a break, you know, that's, it's not often we have that type, like that break between meetings. But we would have. Anyway, we don't need to keep doing this, subjecting all of this.
Do we have a meeting scheduled on March twentieth right now?
March twentieth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, facilities?
I have facilities, that and school committee on it?
Not school committee.
Okay, I, I have it on my calendar or something.
I have it on my calendar too.
Me too.
I think facilities is presented, I think.
Okay.
No, I just have our normal, I just normal have our normal meeting on that one today.
So all, can we follow up with Charlene about getting those invites?
Yeah, yeah, we're coming in tomorrow, so we can, we can do that.
Um, confirmed. That's true, okay, all right, thank you all for your patience. With all that, okay, so that's, that's all I have for my report, unless anyone wanted to add anything. All right, so then, over to you, Beverly Finance?
So we have first up, three vendor warrants that we need to approve. The first being vendor warrant number twenty-eight in the amount of six hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents payable on January eighteenth. We also have warrant number twenty-nine in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents payable on Jan. twenty-five, twenty-four. And then last but not least, vendor warrant number thirty in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents payable on Feb. one. I would love to take care of all three of these at once, since there are three. May I have motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. And next on the list, we have the FY twenty-five budget. I know that since the last time we met, we have not changed the ask for the budget, if my memory's right.
Correct.
I don't know if you all want to go over the presentation in any detail, but it has not changed. So if you're all comfortable, or actually, let's start with, do you have any questions about what you saw, or would you like to see it? That's good, I think all of you at some point has, have been in one of those meetings to go over the full budget presentation that Glenn and or Peter have shared.
And I think the last kind of question was the dual enrollment.
And it is not on the table, it was not incorporated, we actually, I take that back. As part of the FY twenty-five budget, one of the things that we voted on and agreed to was there will be a thirty-five thousand dollar allocation within the operating budget next year. I shouldn't even say operating, wherever Glenn finds it, that's within the realms of the law, to subsidize the dual enrollment tuition fees for our students, to make them comparable. Ultimately, I think, working on a sliding fee scale, but in the meantime, there will be an allocation so that students that, whether they're enrolling in AP or dual enrollment, this fee for both college credits should be equal. And as per the policy that we've been implementing for the past several years, if a student has a financial need, they can participate in both of these at no cost.
And then I, I did have a question in terms of students taking AP classes, to, the majority of them get college credit, I just.
Or the qualifying score, I guess that's.
Or a qualifying score.
So do you have a question about do students receive the AP credit? It really depends on the college.
Okay.
It's not how it used to be that every college accepted every, every AP course. So we actually ask our students to do a lot of homework with our counselors and with their teachers, just to do the research. If you know what schools you're applying to, see what, what AP courses they accept. Depending on your major, they'll accept certain AP courses. If there's electives, for lack of better words, English, if they're a science major, the AP English could be one of their electives, you know, at that college. There is no black, there is no concrete answer to that.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Even with the dual enrollment, we encourage the students to take, you know, participate in the dual enrollment if they meet the criteria, but at the same time, do your research on the schools that you're looking at to see if they'll take that credit, and if you're questioning it, they work with their counselors to call the schools and ask.
Okay, and is that something they decide before they sign up for those classes, or is it kind of after?
The AP is usually after, students who are enrolling. The A, the AP is usually after students are enrolling, I mean, and the students are rolling in AP courses and dual enrollment courses because they're offered here at the high school. That is, that is something that we're fortunate that we're able to offer here at the high school, dual enrollment. You don't have to go off campus to go take a dual enrollment course, right? Same with AP. So the students are enrolling in those courses for AP, they are taking the exam, that is an expectation of college board, that is an expectation that we have um, to enroll in dual enrollment, uh, to get dual enrollment credit. You don't have to decide until April, so. Coincidentally, uh, Brian Seelig, who's the head of the math department, went into the math courses today to talk about the dual enrollment opportunity. They don't have to decide until April, so they're in the course regardless of getting dual enrollment credit or not, so, um. But unfortunately, I can't give you a list of schools that accept AP credit, it really is a case by case, depending on your major, depending on what you take and depending on your score. A three isn't always a guarantee anymore as we used to think it was.
Is it also fair to say that many schools, many competitive universities value students taking the most rigorous coursework or not?
I think that's part of what they're looking at. Um, I think college acceptance is, I know college acceptance has definitely, um, looked very differently over the past several years, and they're looking for more divorce, diversified resumes for, lack of better words, they want that, they want a course load that is appropriate for what you are capable of along with well-rounded student involved, working and, and whatnot. So we encourage students to take what they can handle, um, and what that looks like for every student is very different.
Thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so. I would like to get a motion to pass the FY twenty-five budget, let me get the total. Here we go. In the amount of, is this cost to maintain, the sixty-six million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and thirty. Yes, that's, that's the budget for FY twenty-five. Does that include the roll of, no, it's not, it's more.
That's the level.
That's the level service.
Service.
So it's that plus the one million seventy-five?
Oh, seventy-five, five hundred.
Yes.
Which slide number is that on?
That's twenty-five.
Thank you.
Got to do some math here.
So that would be sixty-eight oh fifty-five seven thirty.
Oh, we have to add it to go. Sorry about that, let me put it, let me actually calculate.
Was it sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight oh fifty-five, seven thirty. So moved.
Can we just add a slide with that for the next time?
So just for the record, let me make sure that we say the total right. Glenn, would you please repeat it if you've already talked about it?
Sixty-eight oh fifty-five, seven-three-zero.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. And next on the agenda is the second quarter report which is attached. Glenn, would you like to walk through that quickly or, or do folks have any questions? He did walk through this at the finance committee meeting. We have some highlights related to things that are above and under, but otherwise, it's the same report.
Yes, I mean, it's, um, looking at the, the majority of our budget is, is salary. We are on budget with our salaries. It's a few other issues that we're being very careful about at the moment, most notably, um, the special education. Since we've, since I wrote this report at the end of December, the state has come out with its guidelines for the, uh, the circuit breaker reserve fund that they've, um, allocated this year. Um, we've been to the webinars on it, um, and we're in the process of putting out, putting, putting our claim in for it. That will help alleviate some of the overage that was in the, the out of district tuitions this year, as you recall, they were increased by sixteen percent by the state after we had built our budget, um, which didn't help a lot. So that, uh, that hit us pretty much with a, a million dollar hole more or less. We hope to recoup, um, a reasonable percentage of that at least. Initial estimates could be as much as seven hundred thousand of that through the extraordinary circuit breaker. So that'll take a little pressure off that, but it's still, we have to watch the, the costs as we're going forward through the year. As we noted in our, um, in the budget presentation, you know, our special ed costs are up, we have more educational assistance required by, uh, the IEPs and so forth, so it's, uh, that's, that's the primary stressor on the budget right now, and it's more and more following. As I say, at the end, um, at the end of December, we didn't have a good feel for heating bills yet because it was early in the heating season. And since they don't come in too promptly, I still don't, I won't for another few weeks yet, but, um, so far it was so good. And so that's the other part we're gonna watch.
And I had an early spring, right?
Well, you know.
According to Phil.
And I, I don't think the groundhog, like, he said early spring, right, so we're thinking about that?
Yeah.
Of course, that's the groundhog that had a thirty-nine percent accuracy ratio, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet the house on that one.
He's due, that's what that means.
Um, so then the circuit breaker only really covers the increase that we have for this year.
Right, there, there's two circuit breaker programs, there's a, um, there's an extraordinary circuit breaker which kicks in if your costs are twenty-five percent above last year. That's always existed, that's a, that's a standing, um, that's a standing policy. Um, and we've never done that, we've never gone up twenty-five percent in one year although we have this year. So, once you get above that, there's a certain percentage of it, that overage that you get back. And then the new version is the reserve circuit breaker, which says, in fact, if you, anything over seven and a half percent, you get, um, some money back on, so. But it's a question of how it gets counted, you have to do one first and the other, so, one comes one way and one comes another way, but, um, we, uh, we're hoping, you know, we have to have that in by early March, and so, we're hoping that that will make a dent because otherwise it's, it's concerning. We do have a, we've, I did hold over money from the suburban power circuit breaker last year, I try to hold over part of our circuit breaker every year until the next year for these circumstances. So we have the ability to take a hit of some size in a given year from a little bit of reserve circuit breaker we built over time. I mean, once upon a time, we had no reserve in the circuit breaker, at the end of fiscal year, our account was zero. And over time, we've built it up, so we have a little bit of a cushion for the unexpected out of district placement, I mean. We have, I don't know, we have out of district, we have one out of district placement that's in excess of half a million dollars. I mean, it can get very big very fast. You know, so they range, range anywhere from forty thousand to, as I say, five hundred and thirty thousand. It's, you know, it's a lot of money quickly.
Any more questions before we move on to the fee schedule? So, the last item is the twen- school year twenty-five fee schedule. Thank you Glenn for putting together one comprehensive report with all of the fees. Some of the highlights, I know, include the fact that, um, we recognize that there are fees that haven't been touched in several years. And a request was made that we, at least, almost like an auto renew, every year we should be looking at certain categories of our fees for increase, especially around the facility rentals. And, um, more importantly, that as Glenn enters his, the second or third retirement. Very much appreciated that you support the district literally, and every time there's an emergency, you have risen to the occasion to support the district, thank you very much for that. That, um, whoever is in the seat next year has a, a schedule which also includes updating this comprehensive list of fees. But we first need to vote on that. Do you have any questions?
I will say before you vote, there will likely be one further change. In meeting with Martha Sandeville of Community Schools, she is looking at having, offering two and three day after-school programs, and we're looking at how we best serve folks in their community school program. So, given that, um, there likely will be a change in that structure because we currently don't have a fee for those kinds of tuitions. And we'll also be looking at, um, the Camp Cunningham in the summer, as, in terms of whether we need to make any adjustments to that, so. We had a meeting scheduled for today, but unfortunately, it almost prevailed over the members, so we'll possibly next time.
But I do think it's good because having that flexibility for families should in fact reduce the cost for people who don't necessarily need five days until six o'clock, so. That's a very worthy reason for it not to be done. Does that mean we should delay the vote?
No, I think you should vote these and I'll come back with an amendment when we get to community schools.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is that a possible change to the, um, Camp Cunningham for this summer or for the following summer?
I am, I'm guessing it probably won't be, it may not be for this summer, I, I haven't talked to Martha about it, but we are getting late in the game to talk about changes for the summer. So, um, unless it's right away, it won't, it wouldn't be for this summer. It's more, are more, we're more concerned with looking at particularly the after-school program in the fall.
And I'll just add as an aside too, that the two and three day option is part of trying to create more access for more slots. Along with other work that we're doing, and that was the meeting we were gonna have today was talking about what are, what is our two-point-o.
Oh, that's good.
Essentially, in terms of, of, you know, thinking about cost, thinking about structure and you know, kind of realizing that we, we frequently hit the wall trying to find people who want to work for three hours a day, it's very hard. It doesn't have benefits, it's not, you know, it, it, we consistently can't find enough staff to, to, to meet needs, so. We're looking at other, what other ways can we approach that? So, I'm excited to problem solve that and go forward with some solutions.
I think our plan was to appreciate increased capacity. Any other questions about the fee structure?
Have you confirmed about the welcome to high, uh, welcome to middle school plan? Like previous years, we have the, um, three days in the June or three days in August?
Yeah, I'm talking to, I'm meeting with Bill tomorrow morning, um, we've been talking over the last few weeks about, you know, it, this includes the elementary schools too, so we're, we're talking about what, what's possible and is, you know, Bill, is it possible to build that into the school day, is it, you know, maybe potentially on both sides, so elementary side and the middle school side, because the transition, part of the transition is bringing elementary kids together. I mean, that's the power of that experience for kids is, I went to, to Glover and I don't know kids from these other three schools, like. That's what helps them get settled a little bit is, and you know, you all as parents know what that's like, who have had kids in the system. Right? Like, once you get, once you get to know like all the kids that are there, you kind of like can relax a little bit, like, okay, I'm gonna be okay in that new space. So, um, anyway, I'll have, I think, more information soon about what's possible for this year and, and what that might look like. I mean, the other thing is just engaging the, you know, there's a lot of staff involved too, so I don't, I'm not sure whether that would make it onto March five. That in-service day where everyone's coming together, whether that might be a time to engage and talk about that or not. If we're gonna get to that level of specificity, but one of the designs I've been kind of, um, mulling over is a morning together district-wide and then some work back in buildings in the afternoon. Where people can, principals can meet staff and, and looking through, you know, kind of reflecting on both district-wide realities and then, and then kind of digging into what's happening at the building, their building, and I think there could be some benefit to a mix and match type of approach, so.
Maybe that elementary teachers from different buildings could also work together to think about.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Do that, accomplish that.
Yep.
Okay, so, so is the idea that we'll vote to approve these pending Milton Community Schools and the Pierce orientation? You're, you'll just keep us updated as you make decisions around those?
It sounds like we'll make an amendment at that time when we finalize.
That's, that's good.
So can I get a motion to approve the FY twenty-five, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? No, it's all good. Thank you, and that's the end of the, uh, finance subcommittee report.
Great, thank you so much. So that brings us to policy subcommittee.
Okay, so policy, we don't have a vote tonight, um, but, and Glenn was, and Charlene were very nice to put all the, uh, the summaries, um, of all the, um, policies we went through, uh, for section A. As we decided, um, to create, put systems in place, we figured that there was like an order to how we update these policies, so that was something that we decided a couple of months ago in our meetings, and we decided to start with section A. So our last policy meeting was on January twenty-third. And after doing extensive research, the central office team was not really able to find what was required to be held in terms of policies by the district, so, um, the recommendation was to kind of hold policies that are currently being held by MASC and they continue to hold, so based on this, and as I mentioned, we're starting with section A. We have a list of policies which I can read through. Um, we decided to reaffirm without changes, um, policies AA, AB, AC, AC dark, AC dash R, ACA, ACAB, ACE, ADDA, ADDA dash R. So the descriptions are down below if you wanna read them or I can read them. But, um, and then we decided to delete the following policies, which is ACAB dash R, ACG, ADA, ADB, ADD, and then, um, then we decided to rename policy ACH as JICFB without any changes to the language because we had one, um, similar, and then, uh, we decided to rename policy IHAMD as policy ADF, also without any changes to the language. And then we will be reviewing policy AD, ADC at our next policy meeting. Any questions, sorry, lots of, I feel like I was just reciting the alphabet.
This is not very substantive, but perhaps you could give me an update at some point as to why these are named in these ways with these letters. I'm sure they're self.
MASC does it.
It's a, it's an MASC.
It's an MASC thing.
But we figured like we'd start section by section, so as like committee members rotate and so forth, there's like a place we left off. Glenn did provide some background where we kind of, in the past, we've kind of picked policies that, you know, we wanted a folk, a committee member would bring to the table and say, hey, this is important, we should look at this one. So there was no, really no rhyme or reason, so now there's a process in place, okay, we've gone through all of these, these are all up to date. Cause randomly, we find policies that haven't been updated in like twenty years or so, which is, so this is now, we now like start here, we add it this way, so.
Could you speak to the rationale for the deletions?
Two of them are actually procedures rather than policies. One of them in particular involves Title IX complaint policy, that's law, you don't need to put that in a, in a policy manual, that, you have to do that. And, um, actually, putting it in a policy manager, which MASC doesn't do anymore, um, but, could put you in conflict if Title IX changes.
Yeah.
Right, so you, you try not to reiterate actual legal language in the policy, you'd rather, you'd rather look at them by reference. And so two of those were that, one was a, one of the deletions was a policy that was, um, the other two don't exist in MASC. They were written locally for various reasons at different times, um, and feel are not necessary anymore, and a couple of the others are redundant to existing policies, you know, if you have a smoking policy and a drug policy, but you have a substance policy, why do you have multiple things when it's subsumed into the larger policy? So some of it is a little house cleaning.
Got it, thank you.
And, and I think the, you know, as Anna said, there's been a history of, of thinking singularly about policy. So it's like, you know, there's this big vat of policies that are just kind of floating around in the water. So it's like, you know, there's this big vat of policies that are just kind of floating around in the water, and you need one, and you kind of like focus on it, and you drop it in, and it's just.
It's your tie. It's your tie running on your mic.
That was me.
Good eye.
Lappel.
We're all looking at each other like, who did it?
Sorry, folks. Just making sure everyone's awake out there, right?
Teach us to wear ties.
Yeah. So we're going through that, we're going through, like, we're finding a policy in another section and then bringing it back over. So that's, we're, we're just kind of trying to do this as methodically as possible.
Yeah, the central office team has put in a ton of work and appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Glenn. What will we do?
I'm scared you're missing it off, Glenn.
Yeah, we'll try to accomplish as much of this, this year as possible. If it all gone by.
It's like the last day. Glenn, did you finish the policy?
Can't leave until he does. Where does this, where does this put us? Under review of all of the A policies?
Two left.
This is it. This is to the two. Two with two to.
The two at the bottom.
Two left, two review, yeah.
Yes.
And so, yeah, those are the two that might need more discussion.
One of them involves having the mission statement, a vision statement in there, and the question is, is that the current mission? Do you want that in there? You know, does it need, you know, do you need to reiterate your mission statement in a policy when you have it everywhere else? You know, that sort of thing. So, but it's a, it's a, it's a decision to be made as opposed to, you know, yeah, that's fine, or no, it's not. Requires a little talk.
And so at our next, so in two weeks' time, we would, um, would we be doing a first reading of all of these changes? I mean, a first reading is, this kind of is a first reading.
I don't think we need to. Yeah, that's what this is.
Okay.
In the sense this is, um, because a first reading doesn't involve a vote.
Right.
And where you're basically reaffirming without changes the bulk of them.
Yeah.
It's, it could easily be a, just as a vote for the next meeting to do.
To approve these motions.
To approve this list.
Great.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you for all the work on it.
Alright, so that just leaves approval of minutes. And, um, this is, these are our minutes for January seventeenth. Um, I apologize because I, uh, forgot to review these minutes, so may I take two minutes to just scan through these? I'm, I'm sorry. And I knew there was something else in there, too. Alright, thank you. Does anyone have any changes or edits to these? Okay. Um, Ben, I, I will make a motion to approve the Milton School Committee meeting minutes of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. In terms of our next meeting agenda items for February twenty-eighth, so we already know under policy we'll vote to approve those changes to section A. Um, when is our next policy meeting? Hold on a second. Are we gonna be, are we meeting before then?
I don't have a.
It's the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so it's conceivable that we might have, like, first readings of those other two policies to bring on the twenty-eighth, but either way, that'll be a good policy report that day. We have the approval of the MHS Program of Studies that we, that we were able to review tonight. Are we doing the curriculum review presentation?
We should be, yeah.
Okay.
Figure out what that looks like. We also have the priority report, so it might make sense to kind of bring.
Yeah. Presenting it on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, that, that was my plan, yeah.
Like, prior to the March fifth?
Yeah.
Working day? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Alright, and we'll have finance. Will we have, we'll have facilities or?
We will have school building committee. Will we have facilities? On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, we have facilities just before the meeting.
Yes, we have facilities.
Okay, great. And for the student representatives, will that, will there, will there be like a cadence to that or?
We don't meet until, um, until March first.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we'd like to get into a cadence where there's some predictability and, you know, they were kind of, they were excited to talk about the calendar tonight. I, you could probably speak for yourself out there.
It was.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, I think they would like to, you know, I, one idea we talked about was having a, like, every time, whatever that cadence is, every.
Every other meeting.
Yeah, or six weeks, four weeks, whatever the, yeah. To come forward with something that they're thinking about, talking about, engaging, and also putting them in a position of watching these meetings and understanding what's being talked about. So, so when, you know, we don't necessarily, Val and I don't necessarily have to meet with them to talk about topics. They're engaged and looking at what's happening in meetings and can come forward and kind of present, you know, and we'll guide, too, of course. But, um, I think there's some real value in them being engaged in what's being talked about, both here and, I think, around the school and in, in town, too. So, in all those different ways, um, coming forward and talking about like what's important. And without going into, I think the thing we talked about, we, we don't think is the best direction, is just talking about what events are happening at the high school. You know, but talking about substantive things that we, we as adults really need to hear because we're, we don't see it, everything that we think we see.
I could even see them engaging meaningfully in certain aspects of the budget if, you know, if we had planned it accordingly. Their feedback on, you know, what is it in the high school when we talk about electives or AP or dual enrollment that's most meaningful for them? So that's maybe something for, for next year that, that we can, if we can engage them early enough. But I appreciate the fact that they showed up and had very substantive opinions and plans for how they can engage and how they're willing to engage their peers. It's a significant difference.
And that was all them, too.
I hope they run again, because I think their elections are in the fall. They should have been like, yes! Hope we're not scaring you off.
And some base it here, right?
That's right.
Subcommittee members or.
Definitely. Alright, so we might not have them on the twenty-eighth agenda, but looking forward to having you back soon. And I think that's it. Any? Alright. Um, so in that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody. Good night.